... that we can have your attention, we're gonna start our next meeting, our committee of the home. We are now six oh four in the evening here at seven ninety Homestead Boulevard. Madam Clerk, please call the hall.
Councilwoman Fay Corwath-McCorville?
Here.
Councilman Martinado?
Here.
Councilman Shelley? Councilwoman Wallman?
Here.
Councilman Williams, absent. Vice Mayor Burgess?
Here.
Mayor Bateman?
Here. Thank you. Madam Clerk, additions, deletions, deferrals. Hearing none, I have one. Comments from Chuck Schumacher. Let me, yes, motion, move forward. We add, yes, I'm adding.
I'll make your motion.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with that at this point right now. Mr. Schumacher, will you come forward? I was trying to be ahead of my game there. He didn't get a staple copy, did he? Chuck?
He only got one page.
He only got one page.
That's it?
Oh, 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 I got him. Excuse me. Yes, sir.
The chief stepped out of the room for-
We need to wait, yeah. Okay, can we move around to item tab one? If you just hold for one second, Mr. Schumacher, we're gonna move on to, is that okay? To car number six oh six, City of Homestead, Centennial Discussion. So if you'll take a seat and let us sit down. Oh, here we go, here we go.
Don't give up so quick. It's coming your way, chief.
Chief? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Schumacher, go ahead.
My name is Chuck Schumacher, I live at nineteen seventy-two Southeast Twenty-First Court. Mayor Bateman and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm here tonight to ask you to take action to help our police department lower the high crime rate in Homestead. During July, I met with Mayor Bateman and Captain Kent concerning the Homestead crime statistics. I also addressed the council meeting in July, and Mayor Bateman questioned if crimes committed in neighboring areas such as Leisure City were incorrectly being counted as Homestead crimes in the statistics that I was using. Our police department reviewed their crime numbers for 2011, and I met with Chief Roll, Captain Kent, and Captain Ray on August twenty-second. We are now all in agreement with the numbers, and the numbers show that Homestead indeed has a high crime rate. How high is it? First of all, I am only talking about the violent crimes, which are murder, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. These are the big ones, they're not the little thefts out of somebody's garage. During 2011, Homestead had nine hundred and sixty-seven violent crimes: four murders, eighteen rapes, two hundred and ninety-nine robberies, and six hundred and forty-six aggravated assaults. For last year, the violent crime rate in Homestead is four times the national average, three times the Florida state average, and two times the Miami-Dade County average. Did we just have a bad year in 2011? From 2007 through 2011, the national average decreased seventeen percent, the state average decreased twenty-six percent, the county average decreased twenty-four percent. All of these are significant decreases, and that same timeframe, Homestead increased two percent. So we have the nation, the state, and the county numbers are all going down, and ours is not. How do we compare to other Florida cities? We have the seventeenth highest crime rate in the state out of nearly three hundred reporting cities. Our crime rate is ninety-three percent higher than the ten Florida cities with populations closest to ours. Homestead currently has one hundred and two sworn officers, which equates to one point seven officers per thousand population. The state of Florida has a ratio of two point five officers per thousand population. Homestead would need to have one hundred and fifty-four officers or an additional fifty-two officers just to get us up to the Florida average. Our crime rate is three times the Florida average, and we have thirty-four percent less officers than the Florida average. Do you think these numbers could be related? In conclusion, our police department needs your help. During my meetings and conversations with Chief Roll, Captain Kent, and Captain Ray, it became clear to me that they and their people are doing everything possible with the resources that they currently have in place. Their people have given up raises, are working through their lunch hours in many cases, and are making other sacrifices to do the best job possible. It appears that they just need more resources. I hope I have made you fully aware that Homestead has a very high crime rate and a very low ratio of police officers to population. I urge you to please take action to help our police department lower this unacceptably high crime rate. Council members, how do you feel about these crime statistics?
Counsel, questions?
I have a question for staff if I could first, just so I can get an understanding of a couple of numbers that would correlate to the fifty-two. Tor, head of HR, if she could come up to the microphone, please. How much does it cost per officer annually, I mean, to start, you know, with the car, their insurance, I guess everything is a package?
Hundred thousand.
So if we use that, that's why-
Our director of finance has-
Okay, so that's, would be about five point two million dollars.
Possibly between a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand annually.
Okay. Could you relate that to me, how many points we would need to bring our milage rate up to cover that? And could we even put our milage rate where we need it to cover that legally?
We're talking, Carlos, about roughly seven million dollars to pay for the-
Recurring revenue. Seven million dollars is recurring.
Correct.
Not just one million.
Yes. And that's as they come in without any seniority buildup or that.
Very awesome.
I just wanna know all the numbers. And it doesn't have to be exact, you round it off to the closest.
Man on the spot, it's never-
You just got done telling me he had the answers.
He just did. I think it's close enough, seven million.
Just anything close.
I thought it was about a hundred and five per officer, a hundred and thirty-five.
I mean, you got by a car.
That's why I thought that-
Uniforms, insurance. Do you think it would-
And their benefits are a hundred and one.
All right.
One times one, sixty thousand.
What do you think? Four, up to, into ten or eleven?
No, I'd hate to say, I know I had the sheet that I'd calculated this before, and I think about every three quarters would generate about, about a million dollars, so, I'd have to calculate that out. I'd hate to give you the financial-
So it'd be about five, five more points on the milage rate, so we'd be looking at eleven, eleven-two, somewhere in there where we're at today.
We can't go eleven.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what, that was my point, so we couldn't even get to where we needed to be really, without a large- Okay, those were my questions. Thank you. Carlos, don't worry about it.
That's to take it all the way up to two point five.
Correct.
But of course, you can take it up instead.
I understand, I'm just, I just wanted, you had the number fifty-two out here, I just wanted to see what the top-
How big of a number that is.
-special up top is.
Yes, sir.
One thirty-five times-
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Wallman?
The section where it says from 2007 through 2011, it gives the national average, the state average, county average, and Homestead increase. The population that this was based on, did you use the census, or how did you?
I used the figures from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the FBI, uniform crime reports, and they take into account the changes in population of the cities.
Okay, so, may, I'm gonna come back to you in one second.
Sure.
If I could just ask Chief and Captain Kent, maybe Captain Kent should come up here too, I think? You got, okay, I know you got it, chief. Are you aware of this report that's put out, and are those, are those figures based strictly on Homestead addresses, or, 'cause I know, I have this, I have this discussion all the time with people calling themselves Homestead when they live in the Redland, or when they live in Leisure City, or when they live other places, because their mailing address is Homestead?
Well, we're the one that report the crimes, the F D L A.
Okay.
So those numbers are correct. However, I spoke to Mr. Schumacher when we had our meeting, and explained some things to him that a lot of people don't understand about the way we police here at Homestead. First of all, the numbers is gonna be high on a lot of crime because people believe and trust in us, so therefore, if they think that the police department is gonna, going to, going to investigate their complaints, they don't have a problem reporting all the incidents. So therefore, I think people are reporting more incidents in Homestead because of the trust for the police department, they do in a lot of cities, because they know, we're gonna investigate it. And I'm not trying to put the other cities down, but a lot of, lot of cities in the state of Florida, people do not report crimes like they do in Homestead because they know nothing is gonna happen, and they're not gonna investigate it like Homestead does. So the trust factor has a lot to do with the reports being, being filed here in the city of Homestead, as far as I'm concerned. And, and also, if you can take a look at the, the four particular crimes that you're referring to, those are crimes, in all honesty, unless you've got a police officer standing on every corner, you can't stop four murders in the city of Homestead, you can't stop eight rapes. Rapes, you're talking about, you're talking about rapes where people get raped on the streets, or someone touching someone, you know, inappropriately, that can look as a rape. Robberies, based on our makeup here in our community, based on our population, I think we're doing pretty, pretty good as, as far as keeping out a lot of, a lot of robberies based on our ethnic makeup here in the city of Homestead. We have every, and anybody here in Homestead, and we invite them here because they're all human beings, and they have the right to live where they wanna live, but I don't think there's no other city in the state of Florida have the kinda makeup we have here as far as, as personnel.
Well, maybe that's an indication that we really do need additional police officers to take into account those problems that we have.
And that's, that's not, that's not, I think that's not being disputed, because, I mean, you know, the more is better, in every situation. I think the problem is that, it's like putting a rabbit out of a hat.
Yeah. I don't claim to have the answer to this problem, I just want to make sure that the council is aware that we have a problem. I don't claim to know how to solve it, I'm just showing you these numbers.
I think if, if we're doing this on a daily basis for all these years, I'm, I'm quite sure they're aware of the problem, it's just like I said, you know, you can't get a rabbit out of a tunnel. And I think if they can do anything to us, to a, a, pretty much assist the police department, they've done that over my thirty-three years they've been here. So I don't think it's, it's, they don't wanna do it, it's just that we gotta find a way to get it done. And, and my, my second concern is that people move into Homestead every day. Since I've been here, they've been moving into Homestead for one reason, one reason only. Police protection, that, police protection and the police department, the way we respond to our calls, our calls, and how we handle our citizens here in Homestead. And if I think that it was that bad, we wouldn't have all the people moving in, we would still be at eighteen thousand, rather than sixty-two thousand. So, and you know word of mouth get around. If people felt it was a problem here, and we had such a crime, such a bad crime rate that we had, I guess our, our crime was so bad in Homestead, in all honesty, I wouldn't live here. And like I told you earlier, when we had our meeting, my daughter moved out of my house three, four years ago, and I told her, the only reason she can move out of my house is she moving to the city of Homestead. Whether I'm here or not, I know what the department gonna do when she, when she need assistance. They're gonna respond, they're gonna address it, and they're gonna take care of making sure she's okay. Whether I'm here or not, if you're gonna move to somewhere else, I got a problem with that.
Well, I agree that the police department is doing a yeoman's job with the resources they have, and like I said before, I don't claim to have the answer to the problem, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware that we do have a problem. When you're four times the national average, three times the state average, and twice the county average, that's a problem.
And I just wanted to ask those questions as far as the numbers, because sometimes when, um, Chief, maybe you can fill me in on this, but how can you compare us to Dade County? I mean, how can, how can the department that issued these numbers, are they based on population, or is this just a lump sum number?
Well, it's based on population, but you have to look at your clientele as well, you just can't look at, I guess, if I say start, start Florida and compare it with Homestead, please, Homestead, the city of Homestead. You know, numbers, sometimes, they can confuse you, and they can pretty much throw you off track, even though the numbers may be correct, but it's, it's more to me than looking at the percentage, and looking at numbers, because it, it doesn't give you the true picture of what you're dealing with in your community.
And you know, I just wanna share this with you, it just happened to me last Friday, I, I happened to get a phone call from somebody who was going through a really rough time, and they lived in the Redland, and they were threatening to commit suicide, and I called nine-one-one, and it took over twenty-five minutes for Dade County to respond, and I had to keep that person on the phone, and I had other people going, my husband was calling people, and I had other people going to this person's aid, and they got there before nine-one-one and Metro got there. I'm not saying anything bad about Metro, I love, I love Metro, but I'm just saying, they have so, you know, our response time is so quick, and this was a suicide attempt, so, and there had already been things done to aid in that suicide, so, and then, and they were aware of that. But I'm just saying with, with response time, what is our average response time, Chief?
It would work from, from, from two to five, from two to three minutes.
Yeah.
One other thing I'd like to mention in terms of-
Thank you.
-comparing the population. If you, if you look just at the isolated, you know, per thousand, one per thousand population, okay, let's take a city like Homestead, roughly sixty thousand people, and say, okay, what's our one per thousand? Well, ironically, not the city of Weston, it's sixty-five thousand population. So if you compare us to the city of Weston, and the city of Weston ranks, Money Magazine ranked Weston nineteenth in America in the biggest earners category with a median family income of ten point one thousand dollars. So if you compare a population of sixty to sixty, it really isn't a good comparison because there's so many different factors. You know, are you, you know, an urban environment where you have, you know, different challenges? You know, every city is different, and population, the population isn't always a good way to compare. The point I think people have made to all of you over time on any service that we provide is, we'd love to have more service, and we discussed this at the budget hearings, is, I think everybody would agree we'd love to have more service. When you go in a four-year period and you have your total assessments of four billion dollars, and you're down, down, down to one point eight billion dollars, you know, with many cities laying off police officers and firefighters and closing parks and stuff, you're in a very, you know, it's, it's been a miracle that you've been able to keep everybody in the, in the boat and not have to hurt anybody, and so that's the fundamental challenge. And as you think about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year per officer, and then also what triggers the, the need for a new police station, and the tremendous costs that are involved with that, I think everybody feels your concern of, everybody would love more police officers, they'd love more parks, they'd love, we certainly would love more talents here to make sure that we don't lose any money, and we'd like more planners to help us get through what's turning out to be increases in our, in our applications, and so I think everybody gets the idea of more, it's just a function of looking at it long-term strategy, and I think the plan for this year was try to keep everybody in, in, in the same, you know, same level of service, at least for this year, and try not to take anything away from the public, because the truth is, crime is one piece of a larger issue of crime. Broken windows theory is how many crime analysts look at, how do you prevent crime? Well, if you close your parks, if you have less programs for your youth, if you have, you know, your medians aren't as nice as they should be, if your code operation doesn't manage, you know, illegal dumping and abandoned buildings, crime starts going up as well. So from a budgetary perspective, it's the whole piece, and it's not just the issue of police officers. It's the same concept nationally where, well, we can spend all our money on jails and put people in jail, or we can start focusing on other things too that, you know, reduce the, the need to have jails, more jails. And so it really is a holistic approach, and I think your point of more service is something that we've all discussed with the, the council, mayor council, and hopefully over time, we can start addressing additional service, as we discussed at the budget hearing as well. As your evaluation starts to decrease, you know, four billion to one point eight billion, and oh, by the way, your general fund has been decreasing over the years while your population has been increasing, again, a miracle that you're able to keep what you have so far, and thank God for the police department, because the truth of the matter is, I've been here now maybe two years, there's not one time I felt unsafe in the city wherever I've been, and I think that's a testament to the police department, that you can walk the streets and really feel not only that you're safe, but it's a community feel, whereas many places that surround us, you don't have that sense of community and safety.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, you know, this is not an easy problem, it's not something you can just wave a wand at and, and solve, but the facts are that the state average is two point five officers per thousand people. That means all these other cities somehow are being able to fund additional police officers that we are unable to fund, at least currently. How are they doing it?
It also unfairness, I think it'd be hard pressed to find a city like Homestead that suffered the losses on evaluation. Some of the statistics I saw was, Homestead had one of the highest, if not highest foreclosure rate in the country, so when you deal with that kinda fifty-four percent reduction in your, in your evaluation, I think if you made a list of all the cities in the state of Florida, I think it'd, it'd be hard pressed to find one that had the severe drops that we did.
I'm sure that we are way up there, you know, as far as being one of the worst in that statistic.
That, that's from a budgetary perspective, that really is the issue, and the other factor which everybody recognizes is, everybody would love to have more revenue, and the easiest thing for the council to do is to raise taxes. The problem is, as you raise taxes, at this time with one of the worst economies that we face, you know, the public, there's, there's an ability to pay, there's a certain, there's a certain time to raise taxes, and there's a certain time to hold off as best as you can, and so what we found ourselves in the last few years is, let's hold off as best as we can, keep the ship together as best as we can, and at some point, and this council met in their visioning session a few months back, and they have a very ambitious agenda, and everybody recognizes they wanna move the city forward and do great things here, and they also recognize right now, at this moment in time, there's a limited amount of funds, and so if for order, for, in order for you to move forward, the first thing is not to move backward, and everybody's working really hard not to move us backward, and then at some point, you know, we'll start moving forward, but at this point, unfortunately, there's no money.
And I think in all fairness too, he sums it up with, with really quality of life issues. I mean, the grants, we've used them wisely, we've spent our money wisely in opening new parks. The new park right by our neighborhood is, is a good example. Never does it, do I go by on a Saturday or Sunday that it's not full. Of all ethnic background, not just one, it's well-used. I think in the trolley system, we've done a great job in moving people around who don't have a second automobile. I think in the education field, for God's sakes, three brand-new high schools in three years. I think that we took a proactive, a, a look at everything by saying, let's, don't throw more police at it, let's throw quality of life at it. Let's build the city with, with positive, positive things, and education system alone has, has, has jumped up a hundred and ten percent in this community. And I think that we'll do it through education, and we'll do it through quality of life issues. Could we have some more police officers? Look, I push all the time, I, I chair the police department, the manager can tell you, the chief can tell you. I pushed hard for six, they looked at me like I was nuts. Bottom line is, maybe we can go to our, maybe we can go to our community policing, back to the reserve officer situation, maybe we can start that program, maybe that program's easier to do. I don't know, but we'll look at something. We used to have thirty, forty reserve police officers. We still have them? So I mean, we have thirty police, thirty reserve police officers who give us, how many, how many hours a month?
Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours a month?
One, one dollar a year.
At one dollar a year.
That's excellent. Hire more.
So maybe we look at that, maybe we look at that department while we're strapped financially right now, or we're, I wouldn't say we're strapped, that we are, we are steady as she goes right now, balancing our budget, improving our quality of life, improving our education system, you know, maybe we look at the reserve program and, and try to, try to bring it up by ten, ten police officers.
Well, perhaps there's some money somewhere in that budget to hire one or two new officers.
I hear you loud and clear, it doesn't have to be fifty-four.
It doesn't have to be fifty-four.
It doesn't have to be ten, let's make a stride to, to make a one. Start with one, I, I, I agree with you, you, you got, you got my attention.
I, I think that, that we all were there, and we discussed that as well, and, and when that time come, you know, the manager's gonna make it happen, and that's what we, we all, we've all talked about that. But we also in the process, we do have ten, we'll bring it on in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna square them in, bring in ten more, so-
Ten more reserves?
Ten more reserves.
Yeah, so that, that will be a forty, what's wrong, forty?
Probably thirty-nine, forty, close, close to that.
Okay.
You know, so we, we're doing the best we can, it's just that, like the manager said, you know, we, you know, we just, we just trying to, just, just trying to stay afloat right now.
So before I turn the floor over to my vice mayor, I just want you to know that, look, we, we are very aggressive and very positive moving council. Those, those positive things you see, education and parks, we did through different types of grants, whether they're county grants, state grants, or national grants, we did everything through grants. If there was a grant out there for additional police officers, trust me, we would have it. I promise you, we will have it. And, and I hear you, it didn't fall on deaf ears, we'll continue to push, and thank you very much. It, it doesn't go without, without merit for you to come here on your time and spend your time to get those stats, we appreciate it. Mr. Vice, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, people that have passion for something or, or wanna spend the time to do it is what helps everybody here that's sitting in this room, myself, the chief, city manager, everybody, so thank you for, for your, the time that you've spent doing this. Secondly, I think one of the things that hit us, that I see is from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven, we almost doubled our population in those years, and, and as we did, from oh-five to oh-seven, we almost doubled. And I remember one of the first questions I asked city manager Kurt Ivey at the time when I first got elected was, do we have enough police for what we have? And he, and the answer was, we're gonna be adding them. Well, he's gone for whatever reason, and at that same time, the economy took a downward spiral on us, so everybody started ratcheting back, yet we still had the people here. So that's one of the unfortunate things that nobody predicted and nobody saw as we were growing, that all this was gonna come to an end overnight on us.
Yeah.
And I remember there being plans to add people, just talking about it with the chief and all them when I first sat up here, and then everything went the way it did for the entire nation. And, and I think we've been caught in a bad time where we lost two point two billion dollars, or whatever the number is exactly, in, in a short matter of time, when we needed to be getting two point two billion dollars more to keep up with everything that we have going in the city and all. And I, and I would like to thank the chief and all his men for all that they do every day, because I've ridden with them, I know their response time is excellent, and, and people, as the manager said, do feel safe around here and that. But I do agree with you, we need them, and, but we've got to find a way to get them there without, without hurting the other people that are out there right now that are suffering through their monthly payments of whatever they are and, and live in check to check. We've gotta be very conscious of that as we move forward, and I think we're all here, and I think as soon as we get an opportunity to add people to that force, it's, it's a priority one, and I remember from the visioning session, we need more people, what do we do to get there? Well, raise taxes, but then when we raise taxes, we wouldn't have just one Chuck Schumacher here tonight. here tonight. We'd have 600 from here.
I understand, nobody wants to ever raise taxes when they're in office.
Well, I mean, if it's a necessity, you gotta do it, and right now, we're just trying to hold the line and move forward, and trust me, I'm with you, I mean, nobody wants to see a figure like that put in front of them, you know, it startles people.
I think that's one of the things, nobody wants to see the facts, nobody wants to see the numbers, nobody wants to believe the numbers, but they are true.
No, no, I'm not doubting your number, but nobody sitting up here wants to see this number and then, well, what do we do? Well, the only thing we can do is, we bring your mileage rate up another 75 cents, or $1.50, whatever it would be to cover that, you know, per thousand, and then.
Well, I received.
Another 600 people out there.
I received a document in the mail for my own personal residence tax. My house tax is going down this year, so my taxes are going down.
Right.
I would gladly give you that money back and hire some police officers. Obviously, my own house.
Can you get 59,000 more people to say that? If they were going up, there would be a whole line of Schumachers out that door.
No, no, I mean, I'm with you, to me though, I just wanted to explain, I think there are circumstances that go with the '07 to '11 numbers that nobody was prepared for in this entire country.
I agree.
And they have caught up with us, if you look at these numbers, because of that, perhaps maybe they have caught up with us a little bit, but we are fighting forward, and trust me, as the mayor said, and I believe everybody that's sitting here, all six of us tonight, that's a priority, we're just trying to figure out how to do it without hurting somebody else or taking away, you know, something else that, you know, then we'll have, Mr. Craig will be up there, or somebody from outside of town would be up there to make an opinion.
Yeah, I was in business for 34 and a half years, and I realized that there are only certain amounts of money that you have, and you have to prioritize the expenditures of those monies. And to me, personally, my safety is a very, very high priority.
And as, I believe, for everybody up here, everybody in the room.
Well, taken, well taken, don't give up the fight, we won't, I promise you, we'll work towards future growth of our police department. You got my word on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, tab one, car 606, City of Homestead, Centennial Discussion. Get the coffee out.
There's gonna be a bit of fluff after that last one, so, I do, my name is Yvonne Knowles, I'm the chair of the Centennial Committee, and I reside here in Homestead at 1697 North Golden Eileen. I do want to say just one thing, tagging on to this gentleman's comments, we just recently had a big Homestead Centennial Kickoff Celebration, we had over 1,000 people on Chrome Avenue, those who were there saw a street absolutely jam-packed with people and children and everything. We had six police officers, and we did not have one incident, I mean, not any incident, and I thank the police very much, you did a fantastic job, but the people of Homestead were there to party, not to have problems, and I think that's a testament to the people of Homestead also, they like to have a good time, and they are law-abiding wonderful citizens, so, so much for our Homestead. Just a recap of the August events that we just had, we had our kickoff celebration on August 17th, which was the pioneer reception, that went off, we had about 200 people at the community center, it was a very lovely evening, followed by the 18th, the public event, which I just talked about, we had over 1,000 people on the street, we had a tremendous effort by a lot of people, we have a hard, hard-working committee of volunteers, we have volunteers who are not on the committee, who do their time to help us make it a successful event, Mr. Larry Deal, Ms. Bonnie Moran, Ms. Ale Guadalupe, Mrs. Ruth Campbell, Kathleen Catherine Fleming, all here who are not on the committee, don't get any notification, their names are not on any billboard or on the website, but they make these things happen, so I appreciate all the work we get and support we get from our volunteers in Homestead.
Round of applause now.
And I'm here with my vice chair, Mr. Tim Craig, who has been a valuable supporter on the, on the committee, and will be speaking to you shortly. The August events were our kickoff, we were praying, we just continued the momentum because we kicked off with a fantastic event. Our next event is September 22nd, I just want to give you a quick update on the finances of where we are right now, we were given $30,000, we have spent $28,000, but we have in the bank $11,000. So, we've been out there getting sponsors, getting support, selling T-shirts, and tickets to our reception, so, we're in the red, pardon, we're in the black, we're in the black, and we're very proud of the fact that we have been able to use the money the city has given us and also bring money in for this event, the past two events. Now, we have a big event coming up, which is our September Children's Day on the 22nd of September. I did pass out the calendar flyer that shows you everything we're planning for the full year. September 22nd is a big event that is gonna be happening in Harris Field, we have a lot of things happening on that day, I'm gonna turn this over now to Councilman Faircloth, who has been spearheading the spirit of the Children's Day event.
Thank you.
I like that, spearheading the spirit. Okay, well, we have a lot of events planned for September 22nd to appeal to all audiences from pre-K to senior high school, we have our K-9 demonstration, so thanks to the Homestead PD for that, we have a video arcade bus coming out, and a host of other events, and we're putting all the pieces to the puzzle, but there is one piece of the puzzle that's missing, and I feel it's a headliner or entertainment entity to come out and really be a headline for the show and really draw the kids in, and that's Radio Disney. And that expense, we don't have it in our budget, but I feel it is in our best interest, the community's best interest, and the children's best interest, to have this type of entity a part of this event that truly caters to kids. We can easily hire a $400 DJ, but when it comes to children, I'm very sensitive about who I bring onboard to work with them, and Radio Disney, by virtue of its name, is a big draw for this event, and I feel comfortable that the music and entertainment that they provide will be developmentally appropriate to the children that we are targeting. And I think it's a fair statement to say that the entire steering committee agreed that Radio Disney would be ideal for this Children's Day event, but we don't have the funds for them. So, I would love the support of my colleagues to increase the cap that we allocated for fiscal year 2012 for this event from $30,000 to $35,000 to help defray the cost for Radio Disney to be a headline for this event, and I'm interested in your thoughts.
So, that's a very minor, minor amount, so I'll move, I'll move it. Your second?
Second discussion.
Okay, thank you, discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Maldonado.
It's a pleasure. Oh, thank you. No, I definitely like to support it, I mean, we always, obviously here, we're committed to our children, and, you know, we keep saying the building block of Homestead is children and education, so I could definitely support what we're asking for, just, I just want to just give it its initial support, and if there's any other comments, I'll leave some more for later.
Thank you. Ms. Wallman?
Oh, thank you, I didn't even ask, but thank you. I have no problem supporting it, but I'm concerned about your remainder amount, oh, there's Yvonne, your remainderment of money, you have $30,000 left to complete the project through the birthdays?
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
When the new budget comes in.
No, this year, they have $30,000, I mean, this fiscal year, $30, but.
It's a month of what?
Till the end of September.
Right, but then, when the new budget kicks in, you have an additional 30, correct?
That's correct.
So, my question is, and again, I have no problem supporting the $5,000 for Radio Disney, but I'm trying to look ahead because you still have all these events, and the major event being the actual birthday weekend event, so do you feel, I mean, could maybe you put together a budget to, so we would know if you're gonna need more money, so we're not hit by that, I mean, when the budget process.
Sure.
Right now, and now's the time to let us know.
Excellent point.
Yeah, because we can't, I mean, you've got all these events here that I'm, you know, I've done many, many events throughout my lifetime, and I can tell you that I'm worried that the $30,000 is not gonna be enough to cover.
Well, I totally agree, we were gonna give you a, end of year, the end of year is, of course, September 30th, and at our October Cal, I was gonna present you with our first half year, what we've done since we started in June with the logo, with all of the work that we've put into branding the Centennial, as well as our two events costs, so you can kind of see where the money has gone. We are about just right at the $30,000 in expenditures, but we have also been out there getting sponsors. The second half, you're right, we have a very big event coming up in February, we have a Christmas event in December, and we have the football game competition in November. What we're, what we're looking at is laying out a budget for you for all of those, so you can look at it and see what we hope to get in additional sponsorships, we just received Florida Power and Light to send us $5,000 as a gold sponsor.
Is that included, I'm sorry, Yvonne, is that included in your?
In the money we have in the bank right now.
$11,000.
Yeah, and we're getting another check on Friday of $2,500 from Homestead Hospital, which is not included, so we are actively out there getting sponsors on a continuing basis, I mean, we're not gonna stop asking for sponsorships at this point, but I think it's very important for you, as our councils see a full spreadsheet budget of all of our expenditures, I will have that for you at the next Cal meeting.
But I think that the point that's being brought up now by Councilman Wallman is that now that you've gotten your feet wet, and you've gone through a couple of events, you've got a lot of your banners done, and your literature done, do you see, before we get into this final reading of this budget, do you see that maybe you may have underestimated the dollar amount, and if you have, for God's sake, speak up now, forever hold your peace because come next Wednesday, I don't know where we're gonna look over at this guy and say, okay, where can you go fund us another $10,000? But I think.
Then I would, I would definitely throw my sword at your feet and say, we need more money.
I don't say that, I said, you sit down quickly, come back with numbers and writing and figures and say, look, here's what we spent, here's why, here's where we're going, and I think that we underestimate ourselves because personally, for a 100-year celebration, $60,000 was not much money.
Yeah.
Even for us, for seed money, let alone when you go out and raise. I know your intentions were good, and I know you've worked, you've worked very hard, but I have to tell you, along with this, and I know I'm stealing your floor right now, but we need to step up as a city now and give you more help. And a couple of examples have already happened on my side of the card, and that's just the other day, when three and a half hours, this woman sat here doing work with our staff person, people, working for three and a half, four hours. Mr. Manager, we need to reach out and find someone that works full-time with them, that does all the entries, that does their minutes, the same person, some continuity with them so that they're not working their fingers to the bone as volunteers, because I can tell you, for four hours, I didn't get anything done for that day, and that was my day to be at City Hall, and I can tell you, every time I called, they were in the same thing, and I felt bad that I was asking for things to be done, I was getting ready to go into a meeting with the manager, there were certain things I needed, but yet you.
There was the omnip.
Were working diligently, so on top of reevaluate, I think that we need to, we need to now come together as a council and direct the manager to have a full-time staff person, or as much as they need, to do the work, to do the minutes, to do the entries, to do whatever paperwork needs to be done on the city side. The city side, I understand, is very difficult paperwork-wise, 17 pages on an application, there should be one person doing nothing but holding these vendors' hands, helping them fill out the package, getting them through the process, so that the event actually happens in a timely manner and effectively.
That would be so greatly appreciated.
I mean, I can't make it any clearer, and council, help me out here, because I think to have a successful 100-year anniversary, we need, we need to step up to the plate.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, ma'am, you had the floor.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to point out, all of this is just a function of setting a budget and setting costs, we'd be more than happy to hire a temporary service to help them, but there's a function of cost, and we have a cap, so.
And that's?
Temporary is not gonna work, it needs to be someone who's familiar with the process, and that's already come straight from the committee. You bring a temporary person in, it's gonna set them backwards. They need to have someone who's familiar, that's working with it now, that's working in the process, whoever it may be.
Yeah, I think the key word I heard was full-time, and we don't have a person that can, we can stop what they're doing and have them work full-time for this committee, so we would have to find somebody to either supplement the services, take somebody within our existing staff.
Swap.
Sign them up.
Sure, just swap them out.
That's easy. But what I'm, my point is, this is just a function of cost.
I got you.
We just figure out how to make it work, it's a function of your policy decision of setting a budget, whatever that dollar is, and we'll follow.
I think that we're prepared to do that, yes, ma'am.
If I could just say that I agree that, I don't think you need full, I understand the mayor's frustration, as I was.
Whatever time they need, whatever time they need, yeah.
But I do think you need somebody to help you. I probably would have waited a little bit to, because here's my deal, it's not our birthday yet, our birthday is next year, so we need to celebrate all next year our birthday, that's our birthday year, so maybe I would have, you know, maybe, it dashes me, maybe wait just a little bit, so to stretch that money out, those dollars out, because your birthday, the birthday is all next year, that's our birthday.
Right, well, we set this, we set this calendar, and it was.
That microphone is really bad.
Yeah, I'm not touching it.
I know, sweetie, I know.
The calendar was set because the people who will visit our city, who are here on a, you know, on part-time basis, will come in the winter, and we wanted to have the celebration. Is that me?
They're not doing anything.
Can you look on the floor and see if a little fuzzy thing fell off?
Not touching anything.
We have a lack of fuzzy, fuzzy, fuzzy things.
Oh.
Thank you. There you go.
Okay.
The softer side, if you want.
That's all right, thank you. Yes, we did have that long discussion, and it was decided we would do it over the winter and end with a big culmination in February, which our actual Centennial date is January 27th of 1913, so we tried to get as close to that date as possible. Actually, we are gonna extend into the year because we want to now have a closing ceremony, which is gonna, something I was gonna bring up to you, which is tying into the publishing, the inauguration, the launching of our book, which is gonna be the Centennial Book, and our time capsule, and that would be like an ending event at the end of our year, so we are gonna try to carry into 2013, so it doesn't all end on February the 2nd.
Well, one thing that I want to do, as I always do, the Bike Festival with Main Street, I'd like to be a Centennial ride and have a 160 and 30-mile ride instead of what we normally do, so there's a lot of things that we can do, but it's all gonna take money, and it's all gonna take, yeah, John Burgess is gonna ride the 100 rides.
I'll ride in the car beside him.
But, but it's important that, and the reason I'm pushing this, and thank you, Mayor, for jumping on board here with me, is that we're in the process right now of doing this budget, and really, it's almost too late, I mean, so we need to jump in there now, I don't know if we can even find the funds that we need to help, to help, but we're gonna try, but it's just that don't underestimate yourself because it's gonna be too late.
Right, I'd be happy to return to you tomorrow with another, another budget for the rest of the year, so you can look at it as quickly as possible.
Yvonne, if I could also, could you, in your proposal, if you could delineate what your staffing needs are, because I think that's also becoming, it's becoming more and more of a moving target, and in order for us to satisfy what your expectations are, we really need to understand what exactly are you looking for from staff, because it's one thing to have a staff member there taking minutes and notes, it's another thing to have staff members processing invitations and, you know, managing events.
Yeah.
Really, what your expectations of staff here are gonna be very important for us to determine what the costs are gonna be.
Right, I appreciate it, Mr. Gessis, we're not really looking for persons to do our invitations or anything outside of the normal, which, the issue for us has been, the paperwork required to have these events kind of overwhelms us because every, as we said, we bring a new vendor in, and all of a sudden, we're into a time warp of two weeks, trying to get them qualified, get their paperwork, get the insurance, get the documents, get the certificate, get the attorney's approval of the little invoice, I mean, our cupcake lady is going through hell right now, so, and it's only 500 cupcakes, God help us if she was building a building, but she's only doing 500 cupcakes, but she still has to fill out a 17-page vendor agreement, and I think that if that, if I can get somebody on staff who could actually. And I think that if that, if I can get somebody on staff who could actually just shepherd that through, so we, as volunteers, are not running around doing paper chasing, I think that's the big issue we need help on.
Isn't, before me, Mayor, isn't Kalia, doesn't Kalia work part-time for you, Elizabeth?
She'd be the perfect person.
She'd be the perfect person that adds some more hours on to help, because she's at the meetings every...
Yeah, that would be phenomenal.
That would just be my personal suggestion, but...
Because she knows, she knows us now.
She's not here, John Burgess, so this isn't a time to nominate.
I hate to interfere with Elizabeth's operation, because she's her own operation. But I just want to point out that Kalia's there for a reason, and she's there to supplement.
No, extra, it would be extra hours, not her hours. No, I just said, I just meant that instead of not infringing on your time at all, the hours that she works for you.
Currently, she really is, basically, most of her hours are for the steering committee right now. She's really doing very little for us on our end. Patty and I pulled all of the work back between the two of us.
So did she do the paperwork for the vendors?
She can.
Oh, but did she?
No, she hasn't been doing that. She's just been doing the agendas, the minutes, the meetings.
And if I could, I think it'd be easier for us if first the committee delineates what their staffing needs are, and then we'll try to figure it out.
Okay, I'm just trying to save money.
Yeah, the problem is, as you start pulling staff members off of particular departments, what'll end up happening is Elizabeth's operation will suffer.
No, I don't want that.
And so, and it's just a function of whose work doesn't get done, as opposed to understanding what their needs are, and then figuring out how to not have anything suffer, and that'll just do funding.
Yeah, I was just talking about adding a couple of hours for Kalia a day or a week or whatever amount of time that Yvonne's going to tell us that she needs, rather than infringe on your office at all.
Well, we bring her in for thirty hours a week right now, so that's what she's doing. But most of it is spent doing the Centennial Steering Committee, and we haven't said anything, because we know this needs to be done.
Thank you.
So what we've done is just pulled the work between Patty and myself to facilitate this.
Well, thank you, Patty, and Elizabeth.
And some of the bottlenecks that the committee has suffered through has been because, and that's what the initial discussion we had about this whole Centennial process is, when you take money and you just give it to a nonprofit, and you have them administer the funds, they're more nimble, and they don't have to follow through on some of the government procurement standards. Unfortunately, the hybrid that we have, which is, they're establishing their budget, they're making decisions on what they want to do with your blessing, but meanwhile, they're suffering through the bureaucratic process, which is there to ensure the public funds. So when they select a vendor that's not on the vendor list, they have to go through the process that every lead vendor has to go through. So that really, this hybrid that we have is a bit on the cumbersome side, but that was a decision that was made at the front end, and we're just going to have to get through the growing pains.
And maybe we'll have all the vendors we need now, instead of having to go out and get new vendors, right?
Yeah, the word "new vendor" is a bad word in our committee.
I assure you, the Vice Centennial will have all this work done.
Yeah, exactly. Could I just finish my little report? Could I have just a few more? Oh, we haven't got the response, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, no, I just, I wanted to kind of point out, because we did, we had this long discussion about how this whole process was going to go forward, and one of the things we discussed in the beginning was this budget idea. And from what I recall, I mean, we just picked a number out of the air. We asked you on the record, what did you do in Fort Lauderdale? You gave us kind of an informational piece on what was done there, and then you also said, some cities do this, some cities do that, and gave us a number, and we said, okay, that's a number, let's start with that. But I don't think we've ever analyzed this. We've never looked at what was actually needed, what did we actually decide to do? Because at that time, we didn't have a committee, we didn't have a set of events, we didn't have anything. We just chose this number out of thin air. And so I think it would be good for us to sit down and actually put together a budget, now that we have a list of events to go through, and see whether or not the budget we set was realistic or unrealistic, so that we can kind of go through the analysis and allot the right amount of monies to have a good quality event. And the other thing I remember we was discussing was, at the time, we picked this number, because it was anticipated that we were going to hire an outside fundraiser, and that outside fundraiser was going to raise as much money as we had allocated or more. And I know that the committee met, and the committee decided that they didn't want an outside fundraiser, that they could do it in-house, that they would be able to raise sufficient monies, but... And maybe that is the case, maybe that it will go forward, but I know at this point, you've only raised eleven thousand, and so it's, at least from what you've said, because we gave you thirty, and you said you have eleven thousand in the bank. So that's about what you've raised to date. And so I think what we envisioned was we were going to raise fifty or sixty thousand dollars, and so we're well short of that. So I don't know if we need to reassess our methodology for acquiring sponsorships or acquiring additional monies that aren't coming from the general fund. But I think those are all things that now seem to be coming to a head, that we need to discuss, because we've held two or three events now, and we have, you know, three times that going forward, and we've already run out of money for this fiscal year, and if we only allocate thirty thousand for the next fiscal year, we're not going to, we're not even going to come close to making it, or if we do put together the event, it's going to be a shell of what we anticipated, I think, or what we envisioned. So I think now is the time that we all need to sit down, the Centennial Committee and staff, and we need to look and see what kind of budget is realistic to make all these events go off and actually have the celebration that we intended, because I don't know that we're going to make it the direction we're going.
My hat's off to you, what you've done for thirty thousand dollars, I have to tell you. Any final questions from council?
I think we'd like to know whether we can get the approval on the...
The five thousand dollars?
On the five thousand dollars for the Radio Disney, for our event.
Motion by Mr. Wallman. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Item carries? Okay.
Thank you very much. And just two more things I'd like to bring up, too. We do have, this is on September twenty-second, we are announcing the winners of the children's... That's not me. Of the essay, the poster, and the photo contest. We have already received over seventy pieces of art from children, from Robert Morgan, Keys Gate Charter, Gateway Environmental, Avocado Elementary, Homestead Middle, Campbell Drive Middle and Hope Academy. So thank you very much for the work that was done by getting the word out to all the schools, because we're getting, my desk is stacked with wonderful art pieces, and we also received thirty-four essays so far. We've extended the time to September the eighteenth, so to give the children more time to get their entries into my office. But at this point, we have a really good representation of many of our schools. So that's going to be, the winners will be chosen by the judges for each one of those categories and announced on September twenty-second. And my final comment is regarding a project that is going to be pending the second half of our term as a committee, and that is our book project. The Homestead, Ruth's here, the Homestead community has always felt they have not had a really good chronological history of the city. We've had picture books done, we've done some interesting, we've been parts of other people's interesting books, but we don't have our own book. And we have taken on the project with the Centennial Committee. We're asking two authors and are working on, hopefully, a collaborative effort with those authors. At this time, we are still in negotiations, and we'll have an estimate on the overall cost, finalized estimate. At this point, we are looking at eleven thousand dollars. The eleven thousand covers the author's fee, which is stated at six thousand dollars, and the initial printing cost of five hundred copies at approximately, it's four thousand nine hundred dollars, but five thousand dollars. So the overall cost for the project is eleven thousand. The five thousand printing costs would be retrieved, because we would sell those books and make that money back. But that is, so that would be returned to us with the sales of the first five hundred copies. I'm asking for your approval only, at this point, to proceed with this project and begin the final negotiations with the authors at this point. If we can get them, or we decide as committee, we only want to work with one author. But we would like to get your okay that we may continue with this project. We feel we can get the funding for this. Again, it's really only an outlay of six thousand dollars, because five thousand comes back with the sale of the books. And that's only five hundred books, and I think if this book is sold properly to all the people in the community, we won't have a problem selling the first five hundred, much less another couple of thousand, because I think it's going to be a book that everybody's going to be very proud to have. So I'd like some direction from the council on this one subject.
Vice Mayor, if you'll ask me.
Uh-oh. Just real quick, I'm sorry, yes. Just real quick, Ms. Knowles, back to the essay contest.
Sorry?
Back to the essay?
Yes.
I had a family contact me over the weekend that doesn't have email capabilities, so...
Drop them off at my office.
Okay, but if they can't get there, can they come to the city and drop them off?
Sure, they can leave it with Begonia.
And Begonia, can we put that on the website or on Facebook, wherever we have that stuff? Because there was a family that called me over the weekend.
Yeah, I just picked up some artwork at the police department, so they're dropping them all over the city. So I'm running around picking up artwork everywhere, so... Mrs. Campbell?
I just wanted to ask, how much are you selling the books for?
Fifteen dollars.
And how big are the books?
They are soft cover, they're not about, not quite an eight and a half by eleven. They're, it's two hundred pages, but she wants the size. No, with size.
Well, the reason I'm asking, have you seen the Book of Miami, the History Book of Miami? They had it at the League of Cities. It's black and white. I think they're all, there may be some, there are some colored pictures in there. But what's it called, the bookstore in the Coral Gables, Books and Books? They had it at the League of Cities, and they had samples of it, and she gave me one. It's just a little tiny one, the small version. So I'll be happy to share that with you, so you can look at it. It's really interesting. Today, we were looking at it, and it showed where they had actually moved Jackson Memorial Hospital. They had the original...
Do you remember the author? Do you remember the au...
I'm going to get it for you. I'm going to get it for you, but have you bid this out? I'm going to have you...
Yeah, we have, we were actually talking to an author who is very well-published, who's written a book on Miami, he's also written a book on the FEC Railroad, very well-known. He's a professor, his name is Dr. Seth Bramson. And he is one of the people we're talking to. The other person we're talking to is Mr. Bob Jensen, who is, you know, walking repository of information and history of Homestead. So we're trying to get the two to work together on this project.
Might be the same, because at the League, they had a book on the railroad.
Yeah, Dr. Bramson is the person we're speaking to.
And it's a thick book, very thick, so it might be the same people, but I'll get that to Larry. He lives right down the street from me.
Thank you. I think Mrs. Campbell wanted to say one thing about the book.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ruth Campbell, twenty-four Northeast, Twelfth Street, Homestead. The one thing in the museum, whether they are just coming to town, or they've lived here forever, or they're just going through, they want a book about the city of Homestead. And I've been telling them for years, we're working on it, we're going to be having it, and we are going to be having it.
Thank you.
Because I know that this is something that you're going to want and be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so you need a vote on that?
Yes, sir, if you'll just give me the direction that I may proceed with this project and encumber the eleven thousand dollars. Sorry, something just blew by, pardon me.
Do we have a motion to move forward on the books? Okay, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking this time and meeting with me, and I appreciate all your support very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you and your entire committee for working as hard as you do. Thank you. Okay, any final questions before we move on? And then seeing that, we'll move on to tab two, car five nine eight, the discussion of... Move it. Thank you. Lawn and sewer, staff report.
Mayor, staff seeking direction, discussion and direction from Mayor.
I can't move it.
Request from Williams Agricultural Enterprises for the city to release their service area from the city's water and sewer utility to Miami Dade Water and Sewer Wassa for the proposed commercial development along Southwest One Five Two Avenue. Should council concur with the request, a resolution has been included in this item and would need council's approval in order to allow the developer to apply to Wassa for service. Developers requesting to reserve the right to be serviced by the city if for any reason Wassa cannot provide capacity or meet the service requirements.
Okay, question from council. Who do you have has moved it? Mrs. Waldman, and who seconded it? I think Mrs. Waldman. Right, Mark, I think Mrs. Waldman moved it, because so do you have? Okay, thank you. Council discussion. Staff gave the report, right? Okay, council discussion. No council discussion? I would say this is just a logistics thing that works easier for them.
It's going to give them options so that they can try to reduce cost for their development project. It really doesn't have a whole lot of impact to us, with the exception of, obviously, if they're not buying product for us, that's lost opportunity, but beyond that, there shouldn't be a whole lot of issues here. On the other hand, if they decide at some point that it makes more sense for the project to utilize our service, then they want that option.
Okay.
We think this will help expedite their development project.
Okay, so you want an actual vote on it? Motion and second?
We'd just like to get it on the consent agenda.
Okay. We got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, got the consensus, there it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, car five seven three, discussion on Homestead legal fees. Staff. Does that mean wife-sirroda-helping fees or legal fees?
A legal fee.
Please, please, I'm sorry, please. He's not here? He's not here?
He was here, he was actually waiting to discuss this issue with me.
Okay, car five seven one, discussion on proposed surplus. Tab four. Okay, second, all right, staff?
Hi, Jerry, this is Jerry's baby, so I'll give him a couple of minutes to give us the notch up.
Please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. On January tenth, twenty twelve, committee of the whole meeting, council requested that staff develop a new process to address the donation of surplus policy to local nonprofit agencies, which is transparent, fair, and equitable, yet protects and is in the best interest of the city. After thorough review, it is staff's recommendation that the current disposition of surplus property process stay as is, but that a post-process be put in place to address the donation of surplus property to the local nonprofits. In your agenda items, there's an attachment with a memo describing the step-by-step process that'll take place for the donation of the surplus items. The first step is a department goes ahead and declares an item as surplus, at which point it's taken to procurement for holding. Procurement goes ahead and catalogs the item in terms of what it is, what's its estimated cost, what department it came from, and that information is transmitted to the finance department for them to track the item as a fixed asset. Once we have sufficient surplus items, we go ahead and put a listing together and bring it to council for council approval to allow us to auction the items off. Once we get that approval from council, procurement uses Rene Bates Auctioneers. It's an auctioning house that specializes in government auctions to go ahead and auction the items off. If an item does not auction off, we actually put it on two or three additional auctions in order to go ahead and try to recoup as much money as we can from the item. Those funds are usually restored back to fund balance, once we collect those monies. Now, the new process we want to put in place is, at that point, once we've gone ahead and attempted to auction an item off multiple times, and we are not able to do so, to go ahead and then earmark the item for donation to local nonprofits. Local nonprofits at that point would be notified by the procurement department that these items are now available. The nonprofits would then, at that point, fill out request forms indicating why they want the items, for what purpose the items will be used, and how it will benefit the community. Those applications will then be reviewed by the Non-for-profit Grant Review Committee, which is currently used by the CRA for the nonprofit grants, and then ranked in order to see who will be given the surplus item. Just a couple of key points to keep in mind regarding the process. First of all, this will only apply to local nonprofits within the city limits. Secondly, they must have a valid tax receipt, meaning basically, they're registered with the city. Thirdly, they have to be within the city limits for at least one year prior to applying for the items. And lastly, the nonprofit has to be in good standing with the city, meaning they're up to date with all their accounts, there's no past due accounts or anything of that nature.
Okay, questions from council?
I don't have a question, ma'am, I just have a comment.
Sure.
When you initially submitted the application to us early on, I had spoken to you and shared with you that I am very comfortable with the practices that you have in place for the dispersion of these surplus items, and in particular, the fact that this body has the autonomy to withdraw some of those surplus items and potentially allocate them to nonprofits. So I'm very comfortable with this process that we have in place as it has been outlined, so thank you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just if I could, the requirements for the nonprofits is, the one is to be here. Do we have a requirement that they actually participate and help the community? Can we take it that step further and not just have an office here and then they receive stuff?
We could add that as part of the process, which is basically an administrative process. This is not an ordinance that has to be passed or anything of nature. It's basically an administrative requirement.
We start giving things, I just don't wanna see people just have, have had an address, a P.O. box or whatever for a year and then all of a sudden-
Yeah, I think it was. I just would caution you in terms of the language that you use, because let's assume it's more of a nebulous service that may or may not apply to residents here, and we wanna make sure that we don't have some sort of an administrative process where we need to audit their activities. And I, you know, so setting some sort of a guideline of what that actually means in terms of-
Okay, we'll leave it where it is.
As soon as it's a hotline for battered women, you know, is it, do they have to have gummy balls?
Noted.
You know, I mean-
If I could comment, the documentation that they'll have to fill out does require them to stipulate how they're gonna help the local community with this particular item that's being donated to them. So at least that might relieve some of your concerns. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so any further discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? All right, okay. We'll go back to league fees. There's the league man here.
Dennis is here.
Motion to move five seven three.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Sir, Thor's yours.
Okay, back in July, I think, in the council meeting, Dick Conley came here when we notified the leagues that we were looking at a ten dollar charge for non-residents. And then we brought this up for discussion on the, you know, the council asked me to do background to check what we, what other cities and municipalities are doing. So what we did is we, if you look at the card, with the item, we put down the breakdown of what leagues have, non-resident, resident, and we also did policies of other municipalities. Just to let you know, Village of Palmetto Bay charges fifteen dollars per child. That's resident and non-resident. Village of Pinecrest charges ten dollars per child, resident and non-resident. And City of South Miami does eight dollars to thirty dollars per child, but that's non-resident only, depending on what sport you were doing. The other one was Miami-Dade County. They have five dollars to twenty-five dollars per child, and they also get ten percent of the concession stands, and they also make the organization pay for the fields that they use, meaning that if the field needed irrigation, or new clay, or new fencing, they would make the organization pay it. So those are what we found out with other municipalities.
Questions from, yes, Mrs. Waldman? Yes, please.
We brought this up, as Dennis said, a few weeks ago, and, sorry. We really did a lot of research. We wanna make sure we're doing the right thing. The most important thing I want everybody to understand is this does not apply to taxpayers of the citizens, of the citizens here in Homestead. These are people who live outside our city limits, and it's our taxpayers' dollars that go into the fields and the, and the, everything that we do. In Harris Field alone, in the last two years, we've done possibly a hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of work. And that included restroom renovations, parking lot lights, windscreen, baseball fields, fence polycap yellow repaired, the baseball fields, baseball bullpens. This year alone, that's from this fiscal year, correct, Dennis?
Yes, Councilwoman.
We've done over forty thousand dollars, actually forty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars at J.D. Redd, and at Robey George, we've done thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. So I know this doesn't seem, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like a lot of money to charge ten dollars for citizens that don't live in the city limits, but believe it or not, we can really, we can really cap on this because our revenues, and it's in your book, the anticipated revenues would be approximately five thousand eight hundred dollars, but that would actually be more than that because we have two enrollments, correct, Dennis?
Yes, the Homestead Little League and the Youth League have two seasons, spring and fall, so there will be two seasons for them. Dick Conley's only one time a year.
So we talk about quality of life, and quality of life is also making sure that we give decent fields and decent equipment, and also make sure that our taxpayers are getting what they pay for. So this is the way that we thought that we could recoup just a little bit of money. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Further questions from council? Okay, direction? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, Committee of the Whole, August fourteenth, two thousand twelve, minutes. Move it. Thank you, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Tab six, motion to place car four, six one four on council agenda, using the Florida Department of Education to maintain current training standards. Thank you, second.
Second.
Okay, staff report?
Mayor, Councilwoman Patricia Faircloth McCormitt would like to bring this resolution to the city council requesting support, urging the state of Florida governor and the members of the State Board of Education to exert their leadership to pave the way for adoption, implementation of the recommendations, the Commissioner's Task Force on Inclusion, Accountability, also urging the Florida Department of Education to maintain current training standards for reading teachers of English language learners in Florida's public schools. Similar resolutions have been adopted by other local municipalities. On July third, two thousand twelve, Miami-Dade County Board of County Commissioners unanimously ratified a similar resolution. This resolution supports the two thousand four hundred and eighty-two grades K through twelve English language learners in the Homestead Senior High School feeder pattern and two thousand twenty-three, and a South Dade Senior High School feeder pattern for a total of four thousand five hundred and five English language learners.
Questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries. Okay, tab seven, motion to place car five six four on council agenda, payment processing and lockbox service. Move it. Thank you. Second. Thank you, staff?
Mayor, the city will utilize bill-to-pay to provide remittance, payment processing, lockbox deposits, and adjustment services to combine all of our paper and electronic activity into one solution. All remittance delivered to the regional post office facility in Tampa. Florida will be picked up and reviewed each business day. Checks, money orders, and other items made payable to the city will be processed and collected to be deposited in city demand deposit accounts. Customers' account and payment information will be uploaded to the billing information system daily to reflect payments made on applicable utility accounts. Agreement shall have an initial thirty-six month term and will be automatically renewed for two consecutive one-year terms unless terminated by the city. Customer Service Department will be replacing the prior agreement, which expires September thirty-first, two thousand twelve. Costs associated with the contract is fifty-seven thousand thirty dollars.
Questions from council? Carry none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries. Tabby, motion to place car five seven four on council agenda, city of Homestead surplus property.
Move five seven four.
Thank you. Second. Staff?
Mayor, several city departments through fleet have determined the attached list of vehicles have outlived their usefulness and are no longer adequate for their intended purpose. Other items listed have also become obsolete or no longer need public purposes. Due to the fact that it is no longer cost-effective to keep these vehicles and items in operation, city will auction them off as surplus. Staff's recommendation, mayor and council approve the attached resolution, authorize city manager to surplus the attached list of vehicles that would be sold through means of online auction or disposed of by authorized procedures.
Questions and comments? Council? Carry none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Motion to place car six oh one on council agenda, data processing insurance. Okay, staff report?
Mayor, staff's recommendation, mayor and council approve the attached resolution authorizing city manager to purchase an electronic data processing policy for the term of one year from ten one twelve through nine thirty thirteen for a total cost of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Package authorized city manager renew the EDP policy with Travelers Insurance Company. Renewal represents an approximate five percent increase from the expiring policy premium, even though we had a slight decrease in equipment values. Travelers paid a significant loss in two thousand eleven, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the companion inland marine policy that increased the rate slightly over the expiring term.
Okay, questions from council? Carry none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries. Motion to place car six oh two on council agenda, excess workers' compensation policy. Okay. Staff?
Staff's recommendation, mayor and council approve the attached resolution authorizing city manager to purchase an excess workers' compensation policy for the term of one year from ten one twelve through nine thirty thirteen for a total cost of one hundred thirty-five thousand two thirty-nine. Package authorized city manager renew the city's excess workers' compensation policy with preferred government, governmental insurance trust. Renewal is consistent with last year's expiring policy premium. Request is in accordance with city's Homestead's code two dash four one one B, which provides the city council may waive formal competitive bidding for this insurance purchase transaction upon finding that the waiver of formal competitive bidding is in the best interest of the city.
Questions from council? Hearing no questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Next item, tab eleven, motion to place car six oh three on council agenda, the liability insurance for the city of Homestead. Thank you. Second. Staff?
Mayor, staff's recommendation, mayor and council approve the attached resolution authorizing city manager to purchase general liability insurance coverage and third-party administrative services to city Homestead for the policy term ten one twelve through nine thirty thirteen for a total of three six, three hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars. This renewal represents an increase of approximately seven percent from the expiring policy premium. In addition to the renewal quote, Travelers agree to have their claims department act on behalf of the city in investigating and processing claims received from ten one twelve forward. This increase in premium for third-party administration services is twenty-five thousand sixty-nine dollars. However, the overall impact to the self-insurance fund will be two thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars, because Travelers will be handling the Medicare reporting and utilizing their software, which will save twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars currently being paid to separate providers. Staff's opinion that this transaction will streamline the claims handling process.
Questions from council? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Tab twelve, motion to place car six ten on council agenda, resolution authorizing expanding CDD powers. Second, thank you. Staff?
Yes, sir. Staff recommends that the city council approve the resolution being requested by the CDD to expand its powers, which would enable it to implement, operate, maintain recreational, cultural, and educational facilities. This would be in addition to its powers to implement, operate, and maintain capital infrastructure. There was, this is pursuant to a resolution of two thousand and three dash oh four thirty-one adopted in two thousand and three. The city council at that time consented to establish the East Homestead Community Development District. Board of County Commissioners adopted an ordinance establishing the CDD in October of two thousand and three. And on, in May of two thousand and twelve, the Board of Supervisors of the CDD approved the resolution requesting that the city council authorize the CDD the power to, to deal with the recreational infrastructure. This is in line with, with, it's under the state statutes, it requires the city council's approval of a resolution for this, and essentially would just authorize those, the CDD those powers, which it didn't take advantage of, and it's an original formation of the CDD, but do exist.
Questions from council? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Tab thirteen, motion to place car five eight seven on council agenda, ITV number two zero one two one zero, janitorial services. Move it. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Staff?
Mayor, staff recommends that mayor and council authorize city manager award bid number two zero one two one zero, janitorial services to the most responsive responsible bidder, best janitorial and supplies in the amount of fifty-two thousand four forty. This is a recommendation for the award of one-year contract for the provision of citywide janitorial services to best janitorial and supplies. Procurement and Contract Services Division issued a bid and notices were sent to four hundred thirty-four vendors, and four responses were received.
Four out of that many. Okay, questions from council? Okay, hearing no questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries? Item carries? Motion to place car five nine five on council agenda, agenda bid number two zero one two two, Mari Drive ditch relocation. Thank you. Thank you, staff?
Staff recommends that mayor and council authorize the city manager to award bid two oh one two two two, Mari Drive ditch relocation to the lowest, most responsive bidder, FHP Tectonics Corporation, the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred sixty-six with forty-two cents.
Okay, staff, questions from council? Help me out with Mari's ditch, just, I didn't go long.
Little background on this project, this ditch is associated with the widening of Mari Drive that we're doing now.
Right.
The ditch was originally located within city right-of-way, but it's servicing an agricultural use. And in order to get the South Florida Water Management District, the city needed to relocate that ditch so that the historical use of the land would continue.
Continue. I got it. Thank you.
All right, did you want to just mention the property owner issue while we're here?
Okay, yeah, we're currently actually dealing with the Mercedes Homes, which are the owners of that property. They're supposed to send a letter to the district supporting the project. We've been going back and forth with them, with our attorneys. We've come up with a verbiage that is acceptable to the city, that they could then support the permit from the South Florida Water Management District. And that's the one thing that the district is waiting for in order so we can continue the second half of the project. And hopefully they will accept our verbiage and send that letter to the district.
So just, I wanted to make sure that was on your radar screen, and that with, absent that letter, we're gonna have some delay issues. So we're trying to get their cooperation, but at this point, we don't have that finalized.
Have they denied a first letter?
We've been going back and forth with them with the verbiage, and finally, the city came up through our attorneys with a verbiage that we would accept, that would not place too much liability on the city regarding their property.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries? Motion to place car five nine two on council agenda, uniform-related items, motion. Move it. Second. Staff?
Mayor, staff's recommendation, mayor and council approve the attached resolution authorizing city manager enter agreement for uniform, employee uniform rental with Quintus Corporation. In accordance with IBEW agreement on Article thirteen point two A.B., the city is required to provide uniforms to union employees. This uniform rental agreement is in accordance with Hartford County Schools, Maryland, through the U.S. Communities Government Purchase Alliance. In order to ensure the local vendors had an opportunity to participate in the solution, procurement issued an RFI of all local vendors, and none could provide this type of service.
Okay, questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries? Motion to place car five seven seven on council agenda, CDVG grant administration for FY two twelve to two thirteen. Thank you. Staff?
Mayor, on May eleventh, two thousand twelve, city advertised RFP two zero one two zero six for consultant to assist with the grant administration and project delivery services in connection with the tentative grant. Services provided will include monitoring of projects and sub-recipient awards, as well as ensuring compliance with CDVG regulations and timely completion of projects. Total number of vendors contacted were one thousand four hundred and eighteen, and there were three responding. Staff recommends mayor, council authorize city manager to approve the award of RFP two zero one zero zero six, administration and project delivery services for two thousand twelve thirteen community development block grant and other related services. Total cost is eighty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty dollars.
Questions? Council?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
With the, is this the Meridian Group?
You didn't say who it was.
It says Meridian.
Meridian was, is that the group?
Is that the group that you work for?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. And I read on here that in your recommendations, Carlos, that you, you scored them highly because of their experience with the City of Homestead and that they would have a strong presence. Are you from the Keys? Are you located in the Keys?
I live in St. Petersburg.
Okay, well, who will have the strong presence?
Me.
Oh, because I, I'm sorry, I haven't seen a strong presence as of yet, so moving forward, I would like to see more of a strong presence and to follow up on some of these grants that have been awarded and aggressive as far as our approach to ensure that the nonprofits are prized of what we're offering them. So that was my concern.
Sure.
Come to the podium, that'd be fine.
Yes, my name is Calvin Knowles and I am a consultant with Meridian Community Services Group. And yeah, I live, we're based in Tallahassee and I live in St. Petersburg and we do have an office in the Keys. And prior, I have worked in Homestead for, for many years and prior I was with, working as a subcontractor to Nancy Phillips and Associates and Nancy did not submit a proposal on this work. So we submitted and I'm, I'm real pleased that, that we were selected and we do have some other staff that I'd like to bring into the city to be involved. But I, I mean, I, we have a lot of clients between Central Florida and the Keys, so I'm, I'm in this area all the time, actually, so I'm looking forward to, to working with you next year.
If I can just follow up on that?
Please.
If the, if finance department recommended you for this proposal, then I, I trust the direction of Mr. Perez. My concern is, I would not feel comfortable with awarding an entity with this grant who principally works remotely. I feel that they should be hands-on, deeply entrenched to what's going on in this community and be vested. And I just wanted to make clear that I have not seen that as of yet. So moving forward, if you're bringing more members of your team on board to ensure that they are active and visible within the city, then I will support you, but I have to be proven otherwise because I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, any other questions from council? All right, and no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Item carries. Next item, Park Recreation Committee, motion to place car 607 on council agenda, amendment to management and use agreement with Miami-Dade County 97CM027. Thank you, second. Thank you, the second, staff report?
On June 25th, 1997, city and county entered into a management and use agreement concerning the real property located at 653 Southwest 4th Street. Agreement allows the county to operate an adult daycare facility at the property pursuant to Section 68 of the agreement. The term was for five years with options to renew the agreement for three additional five-year periods upon the mutual consent of parties. This is the third and final agreement allowed into the contract. The, the agreement, staff recommends mayor and council make a motion to amend the management and use agreement between the City of Homestead and Miami-Dade County.
Okay, questions and comments, council? Hearing none, all in favor? Ayes? Item carries. Motion to place car 617 on council agenda, waiver of use of fees. Thank you, thank you, staff?
Trinity Empoweror Consortium, a HUD-approved agency assisting homeowners in locating densification of affordable housing options in conjunction with We Care South Dade, is proposing to conduct an educational seminar on current options available to homeowners in Homestead who cannot afford their current mortgages due to hardship. Trinity Empowerment Consortium is requesting mayor, council, and city manager to approve a waiver of usage fees in the amount of $500 for the use of the banquet hall at Homestead Community Center on October 18th, 2012, from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
Okay, questions and comments from council? Hearing none, all in favor? Ayes? Item carries. Next item, public safety, motion to place car 605 on council agenda, purchase of prisoner transport van.
Move it.
Thank you. Thank you. Staff?
Staff recommends mayor and council approve the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase one 2013 Ford E350 van with prisoner transport equipment from Allen J Automotive under the Florida Sheriff's Association bid number 11-19-0907 for a total cost of $47,557. Funding for this vehicle was included in the SunTrust lease under the vehicle order approved in car 467 on 6/20/12. As put forward in that car, the order for this vehicle would be delayed while it was put out to bid to allow local vendors to compete. No bids were received and staff requests to move forward on this purchase. Quarterly payments to SunTrust will start 12/2012 and the 2013 budget year lease portion attributable to this transport van will be paid for from the general fund at an annual cost of $10,003 for five years.
Okay, questions or comments from council? I just have one, thank you for allowing local vendors to bid. All in favor? Ayes? Item carries. Okay, any final questions before we adjourn from council? Sure.
We all know today's 9/11 and I would just like to make sure that we remember that here. I wanted to say something, get in the meeting and I forgot, because I know most of us here have been touched in one way or another. I lost a very good friend up there and it's a great, I need that I remember that. That's all.
Thank you, any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
This was a last-minute quarterback sneak that I'm trying to get in here. Commissioner June Deville has a back-to-school movie night and resource fair that's happening at the Charter School of Waterston. It's this Friday, it's September 14th through 2012. I reached out to her office and see how the Homestead Education Committee would be able to help out and assist and so we're going to be having some, some of our representatives out to helping out. What she also, when I asked if there was anything else that we could help out, it is the Waterston community, that's where they're having it. Apparently they're, they're still working on it, they've had some issues with some transportation and so the question of the trolley was brought up. The event is this, September 4th, this Friday from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM and we're wondering, I was wondering if we could get support from this council or if it's possible that we can maybe get the trolley system to help out with transportation because they're using the parking lot to do the movie, so they're asking all the parking to be done over at a medical building out and, by the hospital. You know, when these events happen over at, through, what's the name of the church organization that's there? Quest Fellowship, they usually provide transportation, but in this case, she's just asking if we could help out in reference to some transportation, so I just wanted to see how the council felt about that and if it was even possible. I know the trolley ends, and it's only this Friday from 6:30, 9:30, so kind of picking up and dropping off.
Well, we can ask the, the providers to see if they're available during that time, I would think that they would be. The only thing is, we can't use PTP funding for that type of service because it would be limited to, to a certain event, but if, you know, the council allows us to, to use other funds for that, we would be able to do that, but it would, it would have to, we would have to use other funds to pay for that additional service.
Could we find out and maybe?
We can use contingency funds, though. If the council, Julio, do you have any sense of how, how much per hour for a service like that?
It's, it's not a, that would not be a, a lot of money, it would not be a lot of money.
You're okay with it in concept, we can just find funds from contingency and figure three or four hours of service.
Does council support that or agree to?
I want you guys to remember how easy he found that.
I want you to remember that. It's a little bit. It's always an ant on a dollar. I'm in favor.
All in favor? Ayes? Aye.
Can't win either way.
I'd like to ask, while council's here, Richard, this last proposal here we have from LaLay Sports or whatever it is, I, I've read it over and what's the possibility of you and I sitting down with him and making a ditch effort? How does council feel about that? Because they're, they're asking for Richard and I to have a conversation with him. Does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, Richard to be present. Okay, any problems? All in favor? Aye. Ayes? Okay. All right, you'll set it up, Richard.
Motion.
Motion, Jerry. Second.